Okay, thanks very much. So, welcome everyone and welcome everyone that's watching online. First item on the agenda is apologies for absence. Everyone that should be here is here. At this junction, I'd like to formally thank the outgoing councillor Cassie Bailey, who has found that work pressures has basically curtailed her activities as a councillor. And we all have to consider that. There are lots of people around this table that work full-time. And she's done it for those purposes and those purposes only. But she has assured me that it may not be the last time. And I'd just like to put it on record for my thanks and the thanks of the town council for the work that she did do and her input into it. So let's just let you know that councillor Bailey has resigned. Okay. Item number two is any declarations of interest. Are there any? No? Thanks very much. Okay, so item number three is the approval of the last town council meeting that was held on the 10th of June. So firstly, for accuracy, is there anything that you would like to query on this? Nothing from me. No? Okay, can I have a proposer then? That is, that's councillor Jeffries. And a seconder please? And a show of hands please? Okay, the next items on there, I'd like to thank our town clerk for that as well, is for information only. So as you can see, it's the various committees that we have on here. Environment and Transport, Policy and Resources, Business and Community, Planning, Building and Maintenance, and that's all for information. It's not for decision-making at all. But if there are any questions on there, I'll take it at this junction.
Chair, it wasn't a question, but I think it's worth noting that this is the first council meeting where we've had the full set of committee minutes on our agenda. And it does provide the public or the press or anyone else who might be interested with a complete paper trail of how we've reached the decisions that we've taken. And that is a huge advance on the way the council used to operate.
I agree.
In the past, it's been almost impossible for the public to find out how decisions have been taken. In fact, many decisions have been taken completely away from the public gaze. And I think it's a good step forward for this council that we now have. At each meeting, we've got the full record there if anyone wants to see it.
Absolutely. Thanks very much councillor Bond. Okay, there's no further questions or comments. We go on to item number four, which is financial report. Gareth, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, same format as previously. It gives you your cash balances at the end of the period. You've also had a list of all the expenditure transactions in the May and June months on council activity and on Salsbury Gardens. But the main thing is the importance to me is the budget monitor. And as we discussed in June, and Ian brought up, we're going to have to be very careful in order to remain within our budget without using reserves in the current year. But there's only at this stage a couple of things that I would flag up to you, and they're apparent from the budget monitor report. The first one is salaries, because at the time of setting the budget, we assumed that the new clerk would not be in post until three months into the new financial year. And there will be a saving there. But that thought saving has not materialised because our new clerk Catherine was appointed on the 20th of May. And therefore, as at this point in time, we are 7,000 plus above where I thought we would be. And I'm projecting that to be a kind of £10,000 overspend at the year-end, with everything else being equal. So that's something we need to pay attention to in the next quarter. The only other thing that sticks out at this point in time, apart from a few minor items, is the grant on the youth service. My understanding is that the grant that we had last year was not an ongoing grant. It was a one-off. And we've included a grant again for the current year. It was in the aspiration that we would achieve to get grant income from somewhere else towards the service. But to date, that has not been seen as being feasible at this stage. So potentially, there's a £15,000 imbalance, which would make quite a big hole in the forecast reserves for the end of this year, which started off at £62,000. But I need to comment at this point, it's next quarter will be the interesting.
Any questions? Steve?
I've got a few questions, if I may. If I just go through it line by line, if I could be able to pick it up. On line 30, under car parks, where we've got the payments to date. Budget is six eight seven five, and actuals are one eight eight two. Obviously, I'm not sure that that is reflecting the full amount, but a few hours gone out. Because that seems to be quite a variable variance in expenditure, and quite understandable. We might need to kind of realign those budgets in the future. On line 33, with the number 31 bus. The £31,020 in the actual receipts column, that must include the approximately £30,000 two-year grants that we've had. So if it's true cash flow, we just need to be wary that putting it in there does give a bit of a misleading picture to the overall overspend, because that's what we're paying at least last year for two years.
Yep.
And just a question on line 49, the P W L B payments. It looks like a minus 995. Should that be a plus 995? And obviously, making that a sort of overspend, even though we don't actually budget for it. And just reflecting the bottom line, it does show an underspend. We need to bear in mind that one-off grants is included in that.
Yep, your point.
Yeah, point I'll take with car parks, there are apparent variances on expenditure and income. But these arise at this stage due to the way that car park in operation, money is collected. With tranches of money being collected by the Isle of Wight council and the rent we paid to the Isle of Wight council for these are the car parks. They only bill us for that at the year-end. It's not very helpful, that arrangement, in terms of monitoring budgets. So I'll try and devise something which is a bit more helpful as we go through the year. In terms of getting in for more information out of that county.
And Steve's point about line 49?
It's worse, sorry.
Yep.
P W L B.
Is it a minus?
It doesn't, whichever way it is, it doesn't matter. It's fed in there because the transaction has taken place. Or the transaction relates to the loan that we took out years ago from P W L B to advance to Ventner Tennis Club for the improvement and survival of its tennis courts. And the sum of money is reversed by them paying us. So it's neutral. Forget the fact that it's theirs, Joey, because it's not neutral. It is a bit of a red herring.
Okay, so I'm going to take Mark, then I'm going to take Ian.
Just one query. My payments in June, item line number 12. It's a rural market towns group membership. Now, I believe we discussed this in the Rural Assets and Services Working Group. And I think we decided not to actually join this membership.
That's my recollection. Catherine?
Yep, that's not something I was aware of, Mark, councillor Jeffries. Obviously, it was before my time, so I will need to look at that and, oh, sorry.
Yes, Catherine, you're right then, Mark. We did agree to cancel that. It must be on some direct debit or some renewal. We have got emails to the tune that we wanted to cancel it. So I'll look into that and we'll be expecting a refund on that.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Bond here.
Yeah, I was just going to build on what Steve has said really, and Gareth's comments at the beginning. We know we have a job of work to do on the presentation of the budget. And we have had some discussions at the policy committee about that. And it's obviously a job of work we'll be looking to do with the new policy officer. I think that part of the problem is that it's so early in the year that the budget for the first three months and the actual for the first few months often don't tell us very much. And you can sort of see that on car parks, because I mean, if you glance at the figures on car parks, it looks like good news, you know, because we're almost £5,000 underspent on the payments and the income is only £3,700 down. But the income being £3,000 instead of £9,000, sorry, £5,000 instead of £9,000 is actually bad news, because I mean, that's probably, it's likely to continue or probably reflects the free parking that we've been giving.
It's all the income reflects the money that we've collected out.
Oh, yeah, when we've collected it, yeah. We have another money from the Isle of Wight council. So in a sense, it's not giving us a very good picture. And obviously, on the expenditure side, the same applies. You know, on the park, I suspect the apparent underspend on the park is simply because the electrical project hasn't got anywhere yet, whereas all the early signs are that we're going to have a Freddie Big Bill on the electrics. So I wonder whether really what we need to be thinking about is a full-year forecast. So that somebody sits down and makes their best guess as to where we're going to be at year-end. Now, we recognise it's a forecast, but that would probably tell us more than these figures, because these figures aren't telling us very much really. Because, you know, the staff overspend we know is real. A lot of the other underspends are not real and will disappear by the end of the year.
Sensible suggestion, yeah. Any other contributions, questions? Gareth? Any further you wanted to add, Gareth?
So I am not in contract with you anymore, but as I said to Catherine, I think she's passed it on to Steve. I didn't get to where I wanted to be at the point of my contract ending. So I'm quite happy to do a couple of hours here, a couple of hours there to help Alison and Catherine to get to that point over the next few months.
Thank you very much. And also, just building on that, thank you Gareth for stepping up to the place and helping us out when we really needed that help. Really appreciate it. Thanks very much Gareth, okay. Okay, so if there's no further questions, can I have a proposer please? That's too good. And a seconder? Okay, Logan. Okay, a show of hands please? Okay, item number five is the website report. Did you want to speak to this at all, Catherine?
I can do, yes. Thank you, Chair. So this report is just to update the members as to where we are in terms of the website and rectifying the issues which were identified in the internal audit report. We've had interim staff helping working on the website to get it up to where it needs to be in terms of compliance. It is still an ongoing project. There is still a lot of work to do. And we will be having a new member of staff, starting with us, who will be working directly on the website. So we hope to have all those issues rectified in due course.
Any questions, Catherine? Okay, that's information only. Okay, the financial regulations, we looked at that in the Policy and Resources Committee today. There's only really one change, and it's highlighted in red. It's fairly straightforward, but again, Catherine, did you want to talk to this?
So yes, this is to effectively bring in line the financial regulations with the scheme of delegations, which were agreed earlier this year at the Town Council. The scheme of delegations allows a spend for the town clerk of up to £1,000 and has this in two separate paragraphs. So the financial regulation changes would be those paragraphs. So they're currently in the scheme of delegations to align it to be the £1,000 spend. So it is two paragraphs that you see in red on the financial regulation document.
Any questions? Okay, it is pretty straightforward. We're just bringing it in line, that's all we're actually doing. So if you're happy with that, and there's no further questions, can I have a proposer for that change please? Okay, it's councillor Watkins. And a seconder, councillor Bond? Show of hands please? Okay, next item is item number seven, which is the Chamber of Commerce. I don't mind talking to this because I've had first-hand experience of this. And then I'll hand it over to Catherine. The foremost business development officer thought it was a good idea that we were, you know, have membership of the Chamber of Commerce. I always thought it was a dubious decision. But I was willing to give it a try to see if, you know, we could actually get something out of it that was worthwhile and that was, you know, fiscally prudent to actually do. The first time I have ever had any contact with the Chamber of Commerce, I asked for some assistance in setting up the Ventner Business Association. And it was for basically our community, our business community, to see if we could actually help and assist them and give some support, et cetera, et cetera. The response I got was not great. And basically, the onus was put back on me, the person that was trying to drive that initiative. So I did say to Catherine, in the current financial situation that we're actually in, that we need to claw back as much money as we possibly can to build on our surpluses because of the dire financial situation we find ourselves in. I didn't think that membership was absolutely necessary. We are members of the Isle of Wight Local Association of Local Councils, and we've also gotten help as well. So the proposal is, is that we just stop membership of this organisation. But Catherine, did you want to say anything further?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just building on that, I have had discussions with the current members of staff as to whether it would be beneficial to them in any way. And they feel that it's not something that they would engage with. So it's not something I can see being beneficial to V T C. As the Chair mentioned, we are members of I W L C and Z N L C. And they provide us with the templates for H R and legal which are relevant to the Town Council.
Any questions? Mark?
Well, it would seem to me that if I get no benefit from it, then I'll keep it.
Sustained, my dear.
What's the actual season?
As he had mentioned?
It's approximately £345.
Yeah, it's not a tenner, no. Okay, so if there's no further questions, we need to make the decision that we're comfortable in cancelling this and not continuing our membership. So can I have a proposer please, Mark? And a seconder, Dave Logan? A show of hands? Okay, this brings us on to free parking, which Castlehead Blake touched on, and I've touched on. I don't mind talking a little bit out on this, because it was something I was involved in. Just to remind everyone, I brought this motion forward to aid the town and to aid the businesses in the town, obviously, when we had Leeson Road closed off. And we also, we also had Newport Road closed off the garden for quite a considerable amount of time. And we had occasions where we were completely cut off because it was impossible to get through from Whitwell. So a small initiative, bearing in mind that, you know, we have a small budget and we're trying to save as much money as possible. We took the decision as a council that this was an important thing to do as a gesture to try and bring more people to the town on Saturdays. But with that motion, we did stipulate that as soon as Leeson Road became open and operational, that we would reintroduce the charges again, okay? And I've spoke to many residents, I've spoke to many towns and many businesses, and I have spelt it out that, you know, we can't continue that situation. Bearing in mind that the Isle of Wight County Council did not support us in any way, shape or form. Or, well, they did, but certainly not in the ways that we wanted them to. So I would be suggesting that whatever the outcome is of the meeting that they have in September, if they close Leeson Road, then I would be suggesting that perhaps we can keep that free parking on a Saturday until we know the outcome on whether Leeson Road is going to close or if it's going to remain open. If it's going to remain open, then I think immediately we have to start charging on Saturdays again. So that's my position. It's a pragmatic decision. I mean, in the ideal world, you'd have free parking everywhere, you know, like New Zealand. But unfortunately, we're not. So it's for discussion. Any questions?
Well, I've spoken to the traders as well, Steve, and they said it's picked up since Leeson Road opened. So I think we scrap it and go back to normal.
Okay, any other contributions?
Do we know how much it's cost us so far?
I can find a pro rata cost for you, councillor Too Good. But the predicted cost was £2,518 for a year. And we've obviously been doing it for approximately, no, not that long. But that was the projected loss for the entire year was £2,500. It would be interesting just to have those, I guess, yeah.
Okay, so Jim suggested something. I've got a councillor's suggestion, but...
I mean, how effective was it? Did we notice when we put in place a pickup?
Businesses informed me that there was a considerable pickup.
Yeah, so it wasn't effective.
Yes, it was, yeah. I think it was the right thing to do with that road closure.
The businesses said now, the Leeson Road's open, it's even picked up, even gone back to normal.
Now, what I'm thinking is if that's the reason we're wanting to get a double bubble pickup to the businesses, you know, that is indeed in more people using it.
Possibly. So...
And the thing is, we're all these things that you measure.
Yeah. So councillor Jim Too Good has made a valid proposal. My proposal is somewhat different, on a similar vein, but somewhat different. My proposal is that we retain the free parking until we know whether Leeson Road is going to close or not. That is my proposal.
That could be September the ninth.
Well, it's September if they're going to close it. Well, then we carry on with the free parking. If they're not going to close it, well, then we start charging.
But then we will have wasted money in between now and September the ninth.
Two, three weeks.
Maybe a month.
Better month.
Chair, can I just start? The closure from the ninth to drill the Bowls is a temporary thing to do the work, isn't it?
Yes. Twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks, okay.
So I'll take it close to Christmas.
So we've got another issue here. It's now peak season. You know, it wasn't peak season when we started it. The numbers have increased.
The reason I'm saying this, because I think it would be confusing if we start charging now and then the road closes on the ninth of September. And then we say, okay then, because we're going to get lobbied as councillors, and quite rightly so, can we have the free parking again? I just think for the sake of three weeks, it's a kind gesture to businesses in our town.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably...
I'm talking about, the figure you talk about, the bills in the region are £200.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, if that's predicted, that would be correct. Catalogue, yes, yeah.
May I just query what we've got written here? That's not what it says.
No, it's open for debate. Yes, absolutely, okay.
You're saying the opposite here to what you're proposing.
Well, no, well, it is and it isn't. I mean, the recommendation is, is that we start charging as soon as the road is open. But there's a question mark at the moment whether the road is going to be closed again in a short period of time. So when it opened, we should have, you know, if we were really efficient, we should have called an emergency meeting to say, right, okay, we're now going to start charging on Saturday. We didn't do that. There was no urgency to do that. And I'll put my hand up fully, because I was trying to continue to support town businesses in having that free parking. And I think that if we're looking at this issue now, on the 12th of August, that this proposal is, is that as soon as the road is operational, long-term, we start charging and we go back to normal. But because we are in this transitional period of not knowing if it's going to be closed again for 12-week period, or whether it is going to continue open, that's why I've made those allowances. And that's the subtle change here. Any other contributions at all? John?
Thank you, Chair. If we go with your motion, then can we word it in such a way that, so we don't have to have another meeting about this?
Agreed.
That it, as soon as we get a definitive answer, one way or the other, then a decision will be made now, and then it just automatically kicks in.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. So I mean, I can, the motion to change this recommendation, the motion would be around. As soon as we have a clear indication that the road is open, is operational and is long-term, we will reintroduce charging on a Saturday, okay? In the meantime, we will continue to give free parking to aid town businesses. But only while we're in this transitional period of not knowing whether Leeson Road is going to remain open long-term or not. Is that okay, John?
Yeah, that sounds fine, yeah.
Catherine?
Yes.
Particularly now they've shut up the fields first as well now.
Yeah, again, yeah, okay. So I've made a set of words, a motion built round this paper. Can I have a proposer? Oh, a question, Steve?
I'd love to.
Okay, fine. Linda, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, proposer, which is Steve, and a seconder? That would be Linda. Okay, thank you very much all. Appreciate that.
Also, that's...
Sorry? Yeah, could I have a show of hands on that? Sorry, I thought you were talking about the... You wanted the curtain down or something?
No, no, no.
Keep moving it back as you talk.
It's blind, isn't it? As nice as it is.
Okay, so if we go on to item number nine now, which is contribution to the well-known fireworks that we have during the carnival week. I mean, I think it's self-explanatory, but have you got anything further to add to that, Catherine, at all?
No, no, so I'm hoping it is. So we did have this discussed at the Business and Community Committee. And it was agreed to refer it to Town Council for a decision. It's previously come out of the miscellaneous budget. We don't have a miscellaneous budget line this year. So hence, it needs to come for decision. The Business and Community Committee have budget line under their committee, which would be the Community Development Budget. That would be the only budget which it could be allocated to in the absence of a miscellaneous budget.
Thank you very much. One question for clarity before we open it for debate. Did the Spideas business ask in advance, i.e., you know, a couple of months? Or was it a fairly new request of the £150?
It's a fairly new request in the sense it came before the Business and Community Committee meeting that we had, so it is still fairly new.
Okay, all right. The reason I'm asking that is, is obviously, we haven't got a budget for this request. However, you know, there is some history to this, that we have contributed to the fireworks in the past, et cetera.
Just on another factual matter, just a question. The issue with the budget is not finding a name to put it under, it's having some money to pay for it. And although you say the Community Development Budget could be built to that, my understanding is that budget's fully committed.
The budget's not fully committed, no. There is space in the budget. So the budget pays for salaries and it pays for rent. But it is, there is space in the budget. It also pays for things like Ventner Day. And there are some committed spend that we have for Ventner Day, which we have not spent this year.
So I will now open it up to debate. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I just think we're just giving money away for the free parking. It'd be pretty mean if we can't support this. That's my honest opinion.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
There's got to be a balance act somewhere along.
Right, so great, yeah. Okay, Mark and then Steve.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the last couple of years, I know it has gone through the All Assets and Services Working Group, and it's been approved for that, obviously. And I know, understand the budget line in this. And I agree, I think we should this year at least, and maybe next year discuss earlier about this and get in contact with the Spideas earlier in the year, just to say, will you be asking for a contribution?
I think this provision, I think I remember reading it last night, is there provision in the motion about if we take a vote in it and it falls in favour, that we are saying that we're going to keep that budget for next year, Mark, to build on it. But yeah, okay. But obviously, I think in consultation with the local business would be the right thing to do as well. Steve?
Yeah, we had sort of discussions about this previously. And some people objected principally to fireworks, the grounds are physically friendly and it does upset pets. So I think perhaps we ought to more actively consider supporting the businesses, but that's an alternative way, like lasers, or similar sorts of things. We should actively look at that on this assembly just right scan.
Julie?
About the environmental impact of, um, of fireworks, you might consider.
Okay, so I'm going to bring Dave and then John.
Yeah, I mean, I tend to agree with Steve that, I mean, at this point, I'm a little challenged to actually come down the request for this year. I think my afterthought makes a point that it's not automatic every year. And I like the idea that Steve's got that we may make alternatives. Uh, but, and I think that if we, because that must always be the kind that maybe move these things on first. So we can move to a laser show or something for next year. So I, I would, my inclination is to say we approve this year's, but with
Qualifications.
With, you know, reservations, and we wish to discuss different options next year.
Okay, John?
Um, I, I spoke about this at the Business and Community meeting. Um, and I raised points, some of the points that Steve raised. Um, we seem to get, um, tapped for this every year at the last minute, which isn't isn't, um, a very good way to conduct business, frankly. Um, no matter what the decision is now, um, I would like to see that we, we nailed down exactly how, how, if, if we're going to support this and a timeframe for it, so it's budgeted for properly. Rather than just sort of trying to take it ad hoc some, somewhere. Um, I, I am not particularly in favour of this because of environmental and so on and so forth. And, and to be brutally honest, I mean, two hundred and fifty pound from V T C is not going to make a hateless worth of difference to the firework display, I'm afraid, in reality. But it does make a, a, a big difference to, um, our budget, which is stretched, as you well know, is stretched um, to breaking point. So I, I would not support um, giving, um, uh, the money at this year, but on the condition that, uh, if, if any funding is requested, that it's requested in good time, and that, um, we would consider, uh, alternative, uh, ways of displaying, displays.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Any other contributions? Send that.
Well, with the laser show, I would be more concerned about people in the crowd that are epileptic or autistic, because that would interfere with their wellbeing.
Yeah, absolutely. Steph?
Um, well, the, um, request came through me, and that's how it's been done quite casually over the last few years. Unfortunately, um, the sort of businesses on the seafront tend to run like that. So I admit it's not particularly businesslike, but it's just a sort of a, oh, well, we hope that you will do what you did the last few years. Um, the reason for asking was that they wanted to know, um, and they would put on their signage our name that we had contributed, so that people could see that we, um, contribute. As to regards the, um, offsetting of the carbon footprint, we are planting an orchard, which hopefully would offset that if that is an issue for people. Um, and also I'd like to assure you that the very day I was asked for the money for the fireworks preempting that people might want to think about laser, I put something out on social media, and I had two companies ring me within the hour. Um, and I have got examples of laser stuff on, on, uh, my system. Um, but all I can say is that, yes, I admit it was late, yes, we would have preferred it sooner. Um, you say it's not a lot of money, but the other seafront businesses have all contributed in one way or another. And V E F have contributed two hundred and fifty pounds, and the full cost of them is three thousand five hundred. So that you could say, well, that's not worth getting that much in, but it is. Because if you add them together, it probably comes to something like perhaps a thousand. So I would hope that we could do it this year with view to re-discussing this idea that laser could be more, um, well, friendly to the planet. And I think we should ask the question about it affecting people with any conditions. I wouldn't know about that, because that's not a question I asked, and I'd be happy to ask that question.
Okay.
So I would like to think we could do it this year.
Okay. Any other contributions? Okay, well, I will say this. I think with most things in life, you have to take a balanced view. And I certainly don't want to come across as somebody who's hypocritical, because I'm passionate about doing everything I can for the environment. But, uh, it does come with some qualifications. Uh, the fireworks in Ventna are very well, uh, known, and they're, they're looked forward to by many, many people, many people that don't come from the town. I know lots of people that travel across Ireland just to come to Ventna for carnival nights and for those, those fireworks. And the business bounce that the community gets is quite considerable. Um, and I do think as councillors that we do have to consider that. We are here to serve the community, and that includes the, the business community as well. So I would be taking, uh, the view that, that councillor Jim Too Good has got, is that, um, we've just made a decision about free parking with qualifications, and I think that we should be doing the same for this. That's my own personal view. Um, so I will be supporting, uh, the funding of the usual two hundred and fifty pounds for the fireworks, uh, this year. I think that we should have a debate about lasers. I think what Linda, uh, councillor Linda Jeffries has said is, is also a, a very important point to make, uh, because in fact, if you hadn't said it, I would have said it.
I just think lasers are too, um.
Yeah, I know lots of people that.
Too evasive, aren't they?
Would, would suffer from that, yeah.
You can't soften them, they are there.
You, you can't, you can't win on a lot of these things, you know, so you have to take a, a moderate view, you have to take a balance. And I know that a lot of people, you know, absolutely enjoy fireworks, you know, I do, I love them. Okay, but I do know that they're bad for the environment, but I absolutely still do, do love them. Um, I do take the point that, you know, as a business, they've come to us at a very late stage, and that's not good for us, and they, you know, perhaps that, you know, with reflection that we can, uh, perhaps talk to that business, and if we are going to continue to support this activity in carnival week, and I hope that this council will, um, that we have those discussions about laser, uh, about fireworks and, and about having that contribution uh, request, um, earlier than, than later. This motion does cover that. It covers it for future years as well. But it doesn't, it doesn't take away the fact that we can have a, an informed discussion with, with the spyglass anyway. So that's my view. But, um, unless there's any other contributions, um, I'll call for a, a proposer and a seconder. So the proposal is from Steph Too Good, but this year we do support it. And can I have a seconder?
A seconder.
Not me, Jim Too Good. So I need a show of hands then. Do you need to count? Against, and against?
Two.
Okay, okay. Take a motion, that's carried down. Okay, next one is the report on the CCTV and the CCTV policy. Catherine, did you want to say something on this?
Uh, so, yes, uh, this is something I believe was going to come earlier
Yes.
on, and, uh, so bringing it now with the policy. So, um, at the February meeting, the council agreed to develop a CCTV policy, um, and to consult about CCTV at the public toilets at the Eastern Esalenade. So in, I will address the Eastern Esalenade, uh, matter first. I have put out two consultation to both the police and to the Island White Council as to whether they would have any objections to CCTV at the, um, Eastern Esalenade toilets. The police have come back to me saying they don't voice any objection. Uh, the Island White Council, I am still yet to hear from. It's being passed around the department, so I'm afraid I don't have, um, a clear answer on that outcome. We haven't received any representations from any members of the public at the moment as to that. In terms of the policy, obviously we do have, um, CCTV, um, elsewhere, so we have a policy that has been drawn up, and you have the draft attached there.
Any questions on the policy? On whatsoever?
So CCTV policy, uh, CCTV will be monitored by myself and also our new Policy Projects and Premises Officer, who will have, um, dedicated responsibility for monitoring it and keeping it up to date. Thank you.
Who's monitoring the toilets, the new toilets at the moment?
So that, which one?
The new toilets.
The new toilets, so there, that'd be, so that would be us, the CCTV one would be us, yeah.
But who's monitoring them at the moment?
At the moment, um, it's, it's, at the moment it will be me. Um, when the new policy and projects officer comes, we will both have access to that CCTV.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just think we need to be careful with the word monitoring, because the monitoring suggests that someone's watching the cameras. No, we're not monitoring. And we have access to the film if it's needed to investigate an incident that's been reported, and we are as set out in the policy, we don't just give footage out to anyone, we would only give it out to the police or, or the equivalent. We wouldn't give it out you know, to a private business that wanted to investigate something unless it was a police matter.
Yeah.
I mean, it isn't monitored in the, in the conventional sense of the word.
Good point, Anne.
Managed, yeah.
Good point. Okay, if there's no further questions, can I have a proposer, please? Ian, and a seconder? Jim Too Good, and a show of hands, please? Okay.
Is the lights?
Oh, sorry, yes, a little bit. We've lost the sunshine.
Okay, so the next motion forward is basically on my behalf. Um, I, I couldn't attend the A G M of Iwok this year, uh, due to family commitments, but, um, in my absence, I was voted in as the Vice Chair of, of Iwok, uh, which I'm quite willing to do, but unfortunately I can only do that, uh, if I have some capacity as, uh, as a rep, um, for, for the Town Council, uh, to serve at Iwok. So Cassie had indicated when she was a serving councillor that, um, she was quite willing to, uh, to, you know, let me take her position. I don't think she attended any meeting due to work pressures, et cetera. Um, so for this to go forward, um, I need to have a, 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 a seat at the table at, at Iwok, otherwise I can't fulfil my obligations as, as Vice Chair. Um, but it's entirely up to you, okay? Steve?
Uh, I think it's pretty academic, given that Cassie's stood down, now I propose that you take that place. Definitely. And I'll second that, please.
Well, I was just thinking, there might be others that might be interested in it. But i- i- if you're, if you, if you're happy with that, um, I'm, I'm happy to, to take that, that, that position. Okay, Julie?
Maybe you should be a representative, um, to, uh, to have a position you have at the moment.
Um, I've spoke about this, I'm quite, I'm quite prepared that if I'm ever called upon to, uh, chair meetings, uh, Steph Too Good's quite willing to, to stand down, which means I would be the voting candidate at those meetings. Okay, so I don't mind Steph being the voting rep. Um, I only, uh, need a seat at the table to chair meetings. Okay? So if that's the case, and you're happy with that, I need a proposer. A Steve, and a seconder? That's Jim. And a show of hands? Thanks, thanks very much. I'll think. Okay, so this is, uh, the next one, item twelve, is the memorial to Kevin Garlick. Um, did you want to say something about this, Catherine?
Well, I may actually defer to, um, councillor Steph to give that okay.
Okay, that's certainly, yeah, that's.
Know a bit more about it.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank Andy for coming to the meeting this evening, um, because he is here purely for this memorial to Kevin Garlick. Um, I think everybody knows how well-known he was in town. Um, and there was an, a, a sort of pouring of, we should do something. Um, and so luckily, our local post office is very busy, um, people go in there. And by merely putting a collection box on the counter and nothing else, we have raised this, uh, remarkable figure of eight hundred and eleven pounds.
Amazing.
Yeah. Originally, the plan was just to put a small stainless steel plaque, um, on a tree, which is near where the skimbo thing is. Um, but with having this amount of money, we thought we should consult with, uh, Kevin's widow. Um, we met her there in the gardens, um, we've had several conversations with her. And what she said was she would like to do something a little more ambitious, because we have that amount of money. There is a small amount of grass, if you walk up, with crav behind you, and you look at the wall, as I say, where the skimbo thing is, and there's a, a tree there as well, which is a bit problematic inasmuch as it's really too small for children to play on. However, they do, and they sit on it and what have you, but people are using it, and I hate to bring this subject up again, um, for their dogs to relieve themselves. And as we know, children and dogs don't mix on a small area of grass. So, um, we have looked at the cost of, um, taking that grass out professionally, um, getting a quote for that, uh, replacing it with topsoil and putting shrubs, et cetera. Uh, then there would be a memorial plaque, uh, something hopefully with a shape of a shoe in some way or another, or a boot. So that's all going very well, but then, um, talking to our town clerk, she said, but we would need an agreement about taking care of that area. Because mowing grass, that area takes like fifteen minutes, whereas pruning shrubs in the near future might take longer. So, um, I understand that, um, uh, uh, Kevin's widow is willing to come into an agreement to look after that area. So, um, we're just hoping that you will support the idea. Uh, there's no financial contribution from the council required. Um, it merely is, you know, is it a good idea to do it?
Also, Steph, um, I've talked to Graham Middleton at, at the Enhancement Fund, and they're very happy to help with the pruning of the shrubs as well. And the other thing to consider is that you won't actually have to pay anyone to, to, to mow that grass, so that might save the council some money in the future.
Excellent.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks for that, thanks for that, that was useful.
So that's really, yeah, that's really, so that's the proposal, as I say, at no cost to the council, and also no labour involved for any of our contractors.
Right and proper thing to do, I think. So can I have a proposer, please? Mark, and a seconder? Steve Milford, show of hands.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, the next item is, um, to give you an update on our current vacancies on, uh, the various committees we have. So the paper that you have in front of you, um, I will just, uh, add to the list. But because Cassie Bailey has now resigned, there is also a, a vacancy on, uh, resources and policy. Um, so do we have any takers for the one vacancy on the planning committee?
Sorry.
Any takers for that? No pressure, I mean, obviously, uh, that's fine. I mean, obviously, if you have a burning ambition when you walk away from this meeting, you can obviously, you know, get in touch with the town clerk, and I'm sure that'll be fine. Okay, so the next one is, uh, Buildings and Maintenance. Do we have anyone that's interested in that? Okay, so, so Linda and, um, Jim? So we do have two vacancies on that, so we can accommodate that. So, um, do we have a, a proposer and endorser for, for, for those two going on it? Because d- do we want to do that, or we just say on block? Yes, that's fine, there's two vacancies. Yeah. Everyone happy with that? Yeah, okay, so, uh, congratulations, both Jim and Linda, you're on Buildings and Maintenance Committee.
Judge, as I say, we actually have, because of Cassie going, we actually have two vacancies on Business and Community as well now.
Ah, okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, so the next one is, and by the way, just for the sake of Linda, what, what the usual protocol is, is that, um. That, uh, we've got provision for, for councillors to serve on two committees, okay? You can serve on more, but two's a sort of, you know, sort of, you know, litmus test and so. So the next two vacancies is on business and community, so do we have any interest in this? Linda?
How about do community, please?
Okay.
I need part time.
Yes, any other part time?
Temporarily.
Okay, so if there's no, there's no one else that's, that's interested. Okay, so the two vacancies can be filled by both Linda and Jim, okay? And then the last one is there's one vacancy on resources and policy. Is anyone interested in that at all? No?
Chair of House, how many is on that committee already?
Four. So it's Julie, Steve, myself and Ian.
Or does it maybe?
Yeah.
When?
Uh, ah, well, this is an interesting thing that you bring up, John. Currently, we're attending to meet at nine AM, uh, on a Monday or Tuesday mornings, but. As we said this morning, if that puts councillors off, we can change it to the majority, you know, that, that. Uh, so, so don't, don't be put off by the fact that I've said that, because we can change it, we can be flexible with it. Have a think, John, you'd be very welcome and useful, I should imagine, definitely. Okay, thank you very much for that.
Chair, so anything about having a think, but the next council meeting is going to be, um, October, so. Did you have, do you have? Something, if you're, if someone's interested, there's something to be said for putting them on it at least temporarily and reviewing this in October, otherwise you have to wait too long. Can't talk you into?
Well, uh, no, well, I mean, we're, we're, we're not having, we're not being approved at this meeting of now.
You have to be, have to be appointed at a council meeting, so it's now or October.
Uh, all right, I'll take the flag up, um.
There you go, thank you very much, John, welcome. Okay, so the next item is motions, um, so before I ask. Councillor Bond to introduce his motion, I just want to give you an update on the, uh, part B and part C. So having spoken to Councillor Hutchins before this, uh, meeting. Am I right and correct, please correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, that you're withdrawing them at this meeting? Okay, okay, so those two are withdrawn for another meeting, so that's B and C. So the only motion that we're looking at now is public spaces, uh, protection order, over to you, Councillor Bond.
Um, okay, thank you Chair, well, the public spaces protection order is the rather convoluted way of talking about, um. The dog restrictions on beaches that the Isle of Wight Council has. And the Isle of Wight Council has had a very standard approach to restrictions on beaches for quite some time. And there have been suggestions before that it might adopt a more flexible approach, most recently, I think our former county councillor Gary Peace was, um. Pushing for the Isle of Wight Council to have a look at this before he resigned, um, last year. Um, the proposal that is in my motion, um, has two aspects and it's, we're, we're not proposing to lift all the restrictions, to be very clear. We are proposing to keep the public space protection order for dogs on the beach. The, the proposal is to do two things, one is to review the timings. Um, and the suggestion is that we learn from what Cornwall has done very successfully, uh, for the last few years. And restrict dogs on beaches during July and August between ten AM and six PM. And the second part of the proposal is that, is to encourage the, the Isle of Wight Council rather than just to impose the same bans on everyone. To actually consult town and parish councils and find out what each particular town would like for its beach, I mean, there are. There are different restrictions that apply around the island already because, you know, Steve or Cove is a privately owned beach and, and Cole, um. Compton Bay is a National Trust owned beach, so we already have a variety of restrictions around the island, but the council ones are all the same. And the suggestion is that they should be looking, in the spirit of localism, they should be giving town and parish councils a flexibility to have different. Arrangements where there are strong arguments. And any set of regulations has to meet, meet a balance between the interests of different, you know, different beachgoers. And the island has many, very many responsible dog owners, both resident and visiting, who would enjoy using the beach away from the peak times. And, and away from the peak times, our beaches are very often unused, I mean, I suspect today is one of those rare evenings when there have been people staying on the beach into the evening. But that's pretty unusual in Ventnor, pretty, if you, if you go down Ventnor Beach even in the, the middle of the summer. In early morning and, and in, you know, in the evening, the beach is usually deserted, or, you know, almost completely deserted. And of course, with the weather we've been having these last few years, in, in, often in May, June and September. You, you find the beach isn't being heavily used, so we have an asset that we're not allowing people to use. And allowing people to, to, to use the beaches with their dogs would enhance the quality of life for many people. And without compromising the enjoyment of those who would prefer a dog-free beach during the busiest times. And it would also, as Cornwall has found, make Ventnor and, and the island, the island as a whole, if it was taken up generally. More attractive as a visitor destination. And just this week, I was emailed by a person, I don't know, who runs a holiday business in, in Ventnor. Um, and he, he says, uh, more and more of my guests now bring their dogs. And I would say that ninety-nine point nine percent are very aware of picking up afterwards. I think this additional access would be a great idea and would help cement Ventnor as being dog friendly. So clearly there is, as Cornwall have found, support for it, both from, you know, local residents and from people who are, who are involved in the tourism industry. Um, pet travel is one of the fastest growing tourism sectors. Many holidaymakers choose their destinations with pet friendliness in mind. And that is already a strength of both Ventnor and the Isle of Wight, with the exception of our beaches, which compare unfavorably to counties like Cornwall. And dog owners are more likely to visit our town and more likely to stay longer if they know their pets are welcome. Uh, and I hope the council will join me in pushing the Isle of Wight Council to adopt a more positive and flexible approach when it comes to look at the new P SPOs. Thank you Chair.
Okay, before I, um, throw that for, for questions, can I just have a point of clarity on your last bullet point? You've put consultations with towns and parishes on the arrangements for each beach. Um, when you say towns and parishes, are you talking, you're just talking exclusively about other councils?
Yes, but I would, yeah, obviously I would expect the councils to consult the public and I would expect the Isle of Wight. Well, the Isle of Wight Council will be consulting the public on this issue, um, in the autumn.
Okay.
And in fact is taking views now.
Okay.
Um, but the, the key point here is that there should be some flexibility for, for different towns to do different things if they particularly want to.
Yeah, 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 I mean, uh, I, I take on board everything you're actually saying and, um, and, and yes, absolutely. More and more people are taking their dogs on holiday, uh, totally accept that. I run a small business myself and, and I've certainly had those requests, you know, can I bring my dog, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but as you've heard from member of the public, you know, this is, uh, this is something that potentially could divide communities and. This, Benetown Council is all about bringing people together and finding, uh, you know, harmony where we can and compromise where we can. Um, so it's just to clarify that, um, and I do believe in consultation, so thanks for the clarity, Linda, and then I'll throw down.
Well. I say how it is, and I've never heard anything so ridiculous in all my life. Because Ventnor Beach is about the only decent asset. And if you let the dogs on it messing up the beach, then you're not going to have the tourism coming back. You walk round the town now and it's covered in dog muck, there's still posters up that councillor Too Good had put up. With dog muck on your shoe, um, and I, I am one hundred percent against it.
Okay, okay, any other comments, uh, Mark and then Steph?
Um, yes, uh, I've had many, many residents contact me about this. Um, most of them dog owners themselves, I must say, um, um, most of them a- against it. Um, a lot of comments, um, one comment is, um, the time. Um, up till ten o'clock in the morning and after six PM in the evening. Will you be able to take your dog on the beach? Now, considering the, the recent hot spell we've had, there have been people down there on the beach. From about eight AM in the morning, staying well into the evening. Now, that could be in conflict with the people actually using the beach. Um, because dogs offer leads with lots of people on the beach, who, who don't, um, come into conflict. And as you know, not all people are responsible, some people they, they mess on the beach, so. But yeah, um, most of the people have had com- there was only one person, but there was an agreement, who's contacted me. That's all, and I've had, must have had about fifteen emails about it.
Steph?
Um, I've got a, so it's not a very good way to start this, but I think this is a little bit like politics. We can often end up with forty-nine, fifty-one, and that's how I think we would be. And I don't know which would be the forty-nine and which would be the fifty-one.
That's a good example of that, Steph, but carry on.
Well, you know, seriously, we, um, there are very strong, you have very strong views about this. Um, however, um, some of the people that have got, um, local Airbnbs and that say they are losing trade. Because, um, you can't shut a dog in a car all day, you've got to sort of do something and they believe it would increase tourism. Um, equally, somebody will say it the other way, um, but I don't really feel that we, eleven people around a table. Um, should have too much of a say, I do believe that we have to bite the bullet and as uncomfortable as it might be. And as heated as it might be, I do believe that we, Ventnor, should have a public consultation. Not one that you write in either anonymously or, you know, just briefly to the Isle of Wight Council. I think we need to make a decision for Ventnor. Um, I have watched the beach this last few weeks, uh, initially it was a bit of a shock, I don't mind telling you, seeing dogs, um. There, you know, early morning, late evening, all over the place because we're not used to it. Um, however, one of the examples I can give you is that, um, I quite often like St Helen's and quite often go there. And that's a dog-friendly beach, it, um, that's similar to us, it has kayaks, it has paddleboards, it has children. Um, older people, and there were quite a lot of dogs on that beach because people know it's dog-friendly. And there weren't any problems the couple of times that I've been there, and I've been there for quite a few hours. So I do think that we've got to allow people to say something. And I just wonder, Councillor Switaker, did you not say you had a colleague in the West Country? That had a different look at this, a different way of doing it?
Yeah, uh, in, in Padstow, uh, where, where they, they've, they've, they've undertaken this, 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 this kind of exercise. And, uh, again, as you, as you've said, it, it is fraught with dangers that you will have people on both sides of the arguments. More and more people are taking their dogs on holiday, I'm not a dog owner, okay, I have been, I have been a dog owner. So I haven't got an interest in that, I have been a dog owner, but I haven't got a dog at the moment. And I do know that people are incredibly attached to dogs, the same way you'd be attached to your son or your daughter or your partner, it's as simple as that, that's a fact, you know. Um, so you, you, you are excluding them from that act, that activity of going on the beach. You know, albeit at restricted times. However, there is a point to be said that, you know, there's a lot of people who are going to be quite disturbed, that. You're going to have dogs in peak season, you know, and there are always people that don't clear up their dog's mess, we know that. Living in Ventnor, you're going to go all round, you do, you do, you do see it. So, you know, my, my, my take on this is that Councillor Bond has said. About consultation with towns and, and parish councils, I think that's the right proper thing to do, but what I would like to do. To make an informed decision, because we're here to serve the public, we're not here for our own egos or what we want. Is to have, uh, a, a consultation, you, you probably expected that from me. We held the consultation about the community orchard and I think that this is an area, it is too tight to call. That you should have a public consultation. And that's, that's my take on this. Uh, I, I would vote for this with the qualification that there is a public consultation within our town and let the people speak. In there, and then John and Dave.
If you look at some of the po- beaches in Cornwall that they do let dogs on. It's not the main beaches that are for the holidaymakers, it's tucked away where, you know. Um, because we looked online and had a look at it all and it shows different parts of the beach that. You can walk your dog on and then there's a bit that you can't. Why would you want to take it on a hot beach anyway?
John, Dave and then Steve.
All right, thank you Chair, um, the public consultation element, I, I half-heartedly agree. Um, and as you've been, your statement is, is we're talking about some way to reach some form of compromise. Whereas, um, if we have one or the other, somebody's going to lose that. So I, 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 I do like Councillor Bond's, um, time, timings on this. Um, uh, because it does, it does give people an opportunity to exercise their dogs on the beach. Um, so, no, I, I would support Councillor Bond's motion on this one. Um, up until the point that we have time to have a full public consultation and find out. What the views of, of not just Ventnor people, but people who come to Ventnor for their holidays. Are they safe? Because they have a, a voice in this as well.
Dave and then Steve.
Right, and I tend to, I mean, my, like you, I've, I've been a dog owner, I'm not currently a dog owner, so I don't actually have horses, right? I'm really surprised at the strength of your opinion on this, my personal thoughts, I'd kind of support Councillor Bond's feelings about it. But we're now, I, I watch the timescales that we're looking at here, because we're now sitting here in August. You know, if we're having to have a public consultation, I mean, looking at this means something that happens next summer.
I, I would suggest, yes.
So what, so then this summer will you stay?
Well, currently there are no restrictions.
And there is no restrictions at all at the moment.
Because the, the Isle of Wight Council restrictions have lapsed and they're, and they only realised this after they'd lapsed and they're rushing around trying to.
It's a dog-free beach, isn't it?
Officially, yes. And, and what they are. And what they're going to do is, is propose new orders and then formally consult on them, as I understand it, during the autumn.
I mean, I think, yes, the public consultation is very much the way to go. Because as you see, there is people who are, that will have happy back to pedestrianisation here with such kind of people that, that's coming across the road. Uh, you know, so, I mean, I'm quite happy with dogs around, but not, as, as I can see around the table, not everybody is.
Yeah, absolutely, I totally agree, Dave, yeah.
Uh, you know, it's, so yeah, I think this public consultation is very, and then with a view to. Well, but you know, is, is there a pressing need for something to happen now?
Yes, because there are no restrictions.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's the point, because there are no restrictions. But, but, but I think, I think.
But what, in short term, what do we do?
Well, my preference would be that we go to full consultation.
And do things as is.
Well, there are no restrictions, you can't, the, 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 the legal, um, the legal decisions that restrict dogs on the beach have lapsed. And the Isle of Wight Council can't just put them back, they go, oh, I can't. The Isle of Wight Council has to go through a process, it takes a number of months, including consultation. And until they've done that, there are no restrictions, once they've done that, they won't want to do it again in a hurry. So, so that's why it's sort of topical.
So what we're saying at this point in time is that we're more or less saying that for the rest of the summer, we will have a, a beach that's available to.
But this council has to have a view on that.
Yes, and my, my view is that I'm not a bit uncomfortable with that, but I'm very much in favour of the consultation.
Yeah, okay, Steve?
Yeah, I'm not in favour of blanket bans and, um, this sort of lapse gives us an opportunity to talk about it. A bit more openly, a bit more, but essentially, um, like many, I've, I've been a dog owner myself, but I have, I don't have a dog at the moment. Uh, I think this gives us the opportunity, one for this council, just to say, we support consultation, we're, we're in favour of A or B. Um, so I support this, this motion, I think we should, uh, you know, support full consultation on it to see what people want.
Okay, okay. Any other contributions?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, yeah, I would support full consultation, I don't think we can make that decision ourselves.
Yeah, and I'm happy for that, the, the only point I come back with on the debate, which has been a, a, a good one. Um, is that you can't set policy on the basis of the most irresponsible person. Um, and, you know, two reasons for that, firstly, the most irresponsible person isn't going to take any notice of what the, what, what the restrictions are in the first place. And we do see, you know, even last year, we have seen dogs on the beach in the summer because there are people that will just ignore the signs because. The, the catch with all of this is that no one's actually policing it to any brash extent, and so relying on, relying on people being responsible to. Take any notice of the restrictions in the first place, uh, and the other argument is about the most. Uh, and the other argument about the most irresponsible person is, you know, if, if we set policy on the basis of the, the most irresponsible person. We would ban people taking glasses and bottles on the beach because you regularly find broken glass on the beach, which is, you know, more of a hazard both to children and to animals than, 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 um, you know, anything else really. We would ban people fishing anywhere near the beach because you do find fish hooks on the beach and there was an incident, there was a fish hook, I think, that injured somebody just recently in the news. Um, or we would ban people having barbecues anywhere near the beach because, you know, we don't want hot coals and, and tinfoil on the beach. So you have to strike a balance with any regulation, you can't just say, well, people are responsible, therefore they should be banned. Um, you know, we, we need to recognise that on the one hand, there are people that need education or, or need policing to make sure they behave properly. But on the other, there are many, you know, law-abiding, responsible people who both live in Ventnor with pets and do want to come to Ventnor with pets. And people nowadays do choose their destinations based on whether they're pet friendly and if those destinations that are pet friendly do get more visitors. And if you look around the island, I mean, there are a number of beaches that are pet friendly all year round, Yavaland is an example. Brook Bay is an example, Steep or Cove is an example, because they've only have a, they only have a lead, a, a lead restriction. You can take your dog on Steep or Cove all year round. Um, and those beaches do get extra custom because of it, and in fact Steep or Cove in particular, because it's the only beach in this particular part of the island that accepts dogs, you will find in the summer. A lot of people will take their dogs to Steep or Cove and will use the cafes and, and bars and restaurants at Steep or Cove. And that's the sort of opportunity that, that would be open to Ventnor if we did something similar. Um, but just to reiterate, what I've suggested here is not lifting all the restrictions, uh, it, it's about complete compromise.
Yep, yep, that's right, okay. Any other contributions, questions? Okay, so, uh, councillor Bond has proposed this motion, so do we have a seconder? Steve? Okay, I'm going to need a show of hands.
Two, three, one, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item number fifteen is the schedule of full councils for the rest of this year, which is the fourteenth of October and the ninth of December. And that's obviously just for noting and is for information only. And at this point, it's to say thank you for members of the public.